Do you guys want to have a wait for that long tomorrow?
All right, it's six thirty, guys. Let's get to it. How about the roll call?
Mayor Baller here.
Yes.
Trustee Comodina is absent. Uh, trustee Boggs?
Here.
Trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Hinkleman?
Present.
Trustee Krugman?
Present.
We have the forum, the clerk is here. The attorney is going and we get to the question.
Uh, before we get going with item one, I would like to move items eight and nine up to with two. Everybody have a problem with that? Get all that now at once?
No, it really makes sense if you all just go to the team.
All right, put the board. Okay. Uh, minutes of January meeting, everybody had a chance to read that long minutes? Yeah. Motion to accept the minutes, everybody will. Second.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, could I ask you guys to speak up? I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Motion was made by Leo to accept the minutes. Seconded by Dan.
Good, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion is carried.
Motion is carried. We are going to move eight and nine up to two. And we'll start with appointing our treasurer. I'd like to appoint Lisa Sides as treasurer, I can get a motion on that. Motion made by Dan. Second.
I second that.
Seconded by Sharon.
I've been looking up my side of the last few months.
I'm ready. Um, declare a trustee vacant to the seat. And I'd like to appoint Mary Sides into that seat. And I get a motion on that.
I make the motion.
I'll second. Motion made by Dan, seconded by Leo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, if you guys want to come up, we will swear you in. And you can be part of this meeting.
Excuse me, Steve. I apologize for hearing you slowly not hearing yourself. The seat was being...
It's too vacant.
We can't hear you.
Pardon?
We can't hear you.
The seat that was being...
This is the loudest for us.
Okay, yeah, the seat was being vacated and reappointed. Whose seat is that?
There's two open, we're filling one.
There's two open ones?
Yeah.
Yep.
Whose are those?
That would be this one and this one.
What was her name associated with this one and this one?
It would be Steve Baller here and I don't even know her name, she hasn't come without me. Taryn Comodina.
Taryn Comodina, okay.
She has abandoned her post.
Who's made the determination that the seat is vacant?
Who has the authority to make that decision? My question.
Um, go to six five ILCS five slash three point one dash ten dash fifty. Right there.
What's it say? I don't have the book in front of me.
Well, I'll get one.
Okay. Huh?
It's not public comment right now.
You've got something there, did you?
Yeah. Yeah. So Gary and Lisa come up and let's get to that part.
And I apologize, because the only reason I'm asking is because an email was sent to Ansel Gluck, the IML attorneys for Illinois.
Uh-huh.
And a return reply said that, um, in order for Taryn Comodina's seat to be, uh, you know, filled...
Have you read that, Jim?
It would have to be, you guys would have to go to court, that's just, um, that's just what I...
Have you read the, what the IML...
I haven't read that, no.
After the meeting, I'll give you that.
Okay.
Okay, if I get them, I'll be all sorts, Steve.
Yeah, it'll be great.
And what are you referring to, Jim?
Gary, you want to come up?
What are you referring to? As far as...
Trying to fill Taryn Comodina's seat.
And what about it?
Still the attorneys from Illinois, the municipal, they say that, uh, that's probably not advised by them, you, that the board, the village of Cleveland...
And they said this to you?
The village of Cleveland would have to go to court to take care of that.
The IML said that to you?
I believe there's an email out.
There's an email out?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of it, because I've not seen that.
I don't have a copy, I apologize for that.
Okay.
I can get you one tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, that's...
I can get, I can get you a copy of it.
If that's either here or there now for tonight's meeting.
Let's do a roll call on my vacancies. Motion that my seat...
That's fair enough.
Second.
Yeah.
All in favor of my seat being vacant?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. As mayor of the village of Cleveland, I see Baller here duly appoint Lisa Sides as actual treasurer from February fifth, two thousand fifteen, till whenever she resigns or... So we'll let her go. Freaking after me, I need solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Village Treasurer to the best of my ability. Uh, Mary, good afternoon. I need solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Village Treasurer to the best of my ability.
Any action from your office that could lead to a challenge?
Yeah. Moving on for now. To CD, everybody has a rate quote in front of us. Gary, you might not. Looks like Blackhawk has the highest rate of point seven five, which is a lot better than anything else I see here. Bank of Orion was point four zero. Yeah.
And this is for the twelve month CD.
Of course.
Yes.
Yes.
Port Byron was at point three oh. So I think it's pretty obvious, but let's get a motion to leave the CD at Blackhawk Bank and Trust.
I make the motion that we remain the CD where it's at and just let it roll over at Blackhawk Bank and Trust and roll to point seven five. What are we getting on it right now? Is that where we're at?
No.
Probably not.
Point seven oh. Okay, so it's gone up a little bit.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The CD where it's at. I'm sure you got anything with the financial report.
Oh my God, really?
Make it short.
I'll keep it easy. Um, all the current bills are all paid. I did make one small mistake. I took the pop money from the refrigerator and I put it in the general, it was twenty dollars. I put it in the general fund, I didn't come out of there and go back to the park fund. I didn't do it like that. So, we need to act. I'll do the math.
Sir, what's the good bills, good check?
Yeah, we should use that. We had, um, this month we had a few extra things that we don't normally have. Our safe deposit box was due for fifteen dollars, that needed paid. Office Express had their quarterly fees this month. We had IRS quarterly taxes and federal employee taxes. One check was for fifty-nine fifteen, the other one was for three, thirty-four forty-one. I bought stamps, we were out of stamps, forty-nine dollars for stamps, that's something we don't buy every month. Other than that, they were just the basic monthly bills that we pay every month.
What's the IDOR?
Uh, Illinois Department of Revenue.
We're paying them?
State.
What's that?
We're paying them for...
Payroll tax.
Oh, okay, all right. Got you.
Yeah, payroll tax. Office Express was their quarterlies and profiled on our quarterlies and our end of year payroll. The IDOR was, was the state. And then the IRS one is the, uh...
Who are we paying the payroll taxes to though? Because there's no Illinois or federal taxes taken out of my check here. I mean, there's social security and Medicare, but...
Yeah. For some, some of us have them taken out, but our, most of the trustees, our checks are so small, they don't have a...
No, no, I'm just asking.
Yeah, just, it would be like the mayor, the treasurer and the clerk, they would be coming over theirs. I don't think any of us trustees have them, because our checks are such a minimum amount. Now, when that changes, for the ones that that'll change for in the upcoming election, then there will probably be a tiny bit of state and federal both taken out, I think.
Um, I don't know if you noticed, we got a nice healthy check from Media Column this month.
That's...
Three years worth of...
That's franchising fees, yeah.
What's the unknown deposits then?
Um, where are you at on that?
Unknown.
My glasses on. Um, well Shawna did these. Shawna was working on one of this and I was on the other. And then Steve made some deposits and I didn't have the deposit numbers. The fifteen fifty-eight fifteen was just deposits from, um...
The deposits that were made that I didn't have stubs to identify them with.
I thought it was the checkbook.
There was that much more in the bank on deposits.
Like the fifteen fifty-eight fifteen was three different checks that were deposited. Also from Judy Vartapinka from the state. Just shares of...
We're going to find out who's giving us money.
Right, right.
Well, I'm just curious.
Well, when I get the mail, I write all this stuff down, but it was about a week. He got the mail, so I didn't know what was coming in, so I couldn't put it on here.
I'll show you, Leo. Just to give you a, for instance, we get a check like this that comes in looking like that. So it's Illinois Department of Revenue, local sheriff, state sales and use tax. So that was for three fifty-six forty-eight. There were several, they come a few days apart. And Steve, when I was six, Steve deposited all of them, so that's part of the fifteen hundred. And one of them was for seven hundred and six. And then one was for, so she just put a number, because she didn't have the right numbers to put on. It doesn't mean we don't know her, it means that she didn't have it.
I don't know.
I'm just curious.
And Steve had left all these stubs laying here at the office and I was just sitting there over here getting them, so we just, we couldn't, we didn't get coordinated in time for tonight's meeting.
Clear it up.
It was my personal money.
Well, I just thought maybe, you know, there was somebody out there that would be really nice to...
Motion to accept the financial report.
I make the motion.
Motion made by Dan, second.
It was Gary.
Oh, Gary, I'm sorry. I forgot, we got another guy over here.
Uh, should we not do a roll call vote? We didn't do a roll call once we got...
On the CD?
No.
Only your trustee.
The new roll call vote with the appointment. To recognize...
Oh, okay, I don't know if it matters, because we have form anyway. I don't, I don't think it really is. Put him on next month's.
We can back up your evidence, too.
Yeah, go ahead.
Trustee Baller here.
Yes.
Trustee Comodina still absent. Uh, trustee Boggs?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Hinkleman?
Yes.
Trustee Krugman?
Is this for the appointment of...
This is just for a roll call, because we didn't do it after the appointment.
Got you, yes.
New motion with the new.
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Sides.
All right, so we have four. Uh, trustee, or clerk is still here. Treasurer Sides?
Yep.
Here. Attorney still absent, thank you. Because we're on financial report.
So we have a motion by...
Hi, Gary.
Yeah, to accept financial, we need a second.
I can't second it, I'm the one that was involved in it.
You don't have that faith?
No.
I'll second it.
Seconded by... Moving on, attorney's report, we won't have that tonight. All in business. I do have a little something here.
Right.
There you go.
We do a roll call on the financials, Steve.
Okay. Roll call to accept the financial.
Trustee Boggs?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Hinkleman?
Yes.
Trustee Krugman?
Yes.
Trustee Sides?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you, Steve. We do need to, we do need to do this real quick, too, Steve.
Okay.
In our package, we've got a membership invoice for the clerk for the Illinois Municipal League membership dues. It's a yearly fee of a hundred and forty-five dollars. I make the motion that we pay, that we get that paid and continue on for our clerk to have a membership in the Illinois Municipal League.
I'll second that. Motion made by Sharon, seconded by Gary Sides. All in favor?
Uh, trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Hinkleman?
Yes.
Trustee Krugman?
Yes.
Trustee Sides?
Yes.
Trustee Boggs?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
I'm going to quick show you guys this before I order the weight limit signs. opinions on if you guys want us to order these. I was thinking of putting one over by your house and one down by the boat ramp. So we can get an elevation shot.
Sure.
And then we know exactly how much water's on this road when it floods.
Yep.
And we can kind of give people an idea of what the river's doing if we have one of these down at the boat ramp before it gets up and on this stuff.
I have suggestions, we just need to probably find a spot, put it down like halfway so that people will access it, because it slopes down.
Down, down at three.
Because like, no.
Oh.
Out here on Broadway, because probably about where the tubes at is...
We can decide that later.
Yeah, no, I like that idea.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Basically, just a flood one elevation, we know if we put one over here on the highway somewhere, we know how much water's on that highway when it floods. And we have one down by the boat ramp. If we took an elevation shot somewhere and put it, you know, it could help a lot of people out knowing what the river's doing.
I think there's a certified elevation marker down at the boat ramp.
There is somewhere. You guys see that?
What's the price on those, Steve?
They're sixty-seven dollars, I believe. Just that.
It'd just let us know, huh, where the water's at.
And I should have made copies, but I was stumped through the book to order the weight limit signs that we need for Maine. And I seen that, so I held up. And if you guys want, I will, we're going to take a roll call on that, but they are... Uh, sixty-eight dollars, ten cents is what they have here. I'm sure there'd be a little bit of shipping, but...
They order at the same time as the weight limit signs?
Yes.
Now, get some kind of package deal.
Yep.
What's the price on those?
Uh, the weight limit signs? Uh, they're, I'm going to have to find them, maybe on... Uh, I want to say they're like thirty or forty apiece. Only two of them.
So we're going to spend approximately two hundred and fifty dollars, give or take? Seventy, one forty? Two eighty?
Here's, uh, weight limit signs, but it'll take a little bit to get to where they're going to be. I think that's just a sticker that they've got there.
Got you.
But if you turn a page or two, they'll fill you kind of a...
Two of those?
Yeah.
Two of those and two of the flood... Fudders? Flood warning markers?
I don't think they're, uh, weight limit signs are one before the...
Okay. I just wanted to put approximate...
Right.
...limit on it, so... Seven eighty, one two, two twenty. I have to ship it for being, I guess it could be a little bit crazy.
Do we want to do a roll call on that, clerk?
Motion.
Motion, okay.
All right. We've already made the motion, we have the weight limit signs done. So I need a motion to buy two flood warning signs, elevation signs.
I'll make a motion that we purchase, along with the purchase of the two, uh, weight limit signs that we also, at the same time, purchase two flood warning elevation markers. Tell the purchase not to exceed three hundred dollars.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Do you want to do a roll call?
No.
Where's the money?
We'll do a roll call, that's fine. Trustee Hinkleman?
Yes.
Trustee Krugman?
Yes.
Trustee Boggs?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Sides?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Just a side note, I'm not speaking of a flood. That woman from, uh, that class thing that we talked about in the tunnel, she's never returned my calls. I've left her three voicemails. But anyway, I did call to inquire if the class was on the line or if they filled it or if there was room for another, or if it got canceled. She's not returning her three, I called her three days ago.
Okay, the appropriations ordinance.
I need to make new copies for all of you.
What's that?
Trustee, I need to make new copies for all of you guys.
Probably just me and everybody else without their...
I know, nobody ever brings them with, I thought, man, there's lots and lots of stuff. You just want the ordinance or you want this, too? I did not update the list.
What were we saying we had to do? We were going to have to change the...
Up the amounts or...
Maybe just make the...
Okay. Well, we've got a little time here. Uh, Jim, you got a problem with, um, Ms. Comodina being replaced? Or do you think we should just leave that seat open or... Or do you know why she's not coming to the meetings?
I don't know that. I'm just going off of what your attorney has told you previously. And then, uh, I was just told a few minutes before the meeting by somebody here in town that he had received a letter, an email from, uh, IML, our, uh, Illinois Municipal League, saying that trying to fill that spot at this point is... is not the appropriate, uh, action to take right now. First, you guys have to go to court to actually remove her from that position. I haven't seen the email yet, I was only told that I don't have it in my possession. I probably will have later this evening, and I can get you guys a copy of it, whatever you would like. But I'm sure you guys...
I would like to see.
I'm sure all of you will get a copy tomorrow, whether you want it one or not. So anyway, that's the information that I heard, regardless of what you took out of the book.
I'd like to read a little bit of this statute.
Read?
Abandonment and other causes. Uh, we're talking, the topic here is vacancies. Uh, vacancy occurs in office by reason of abandonment of office, removal from office, failure to qualify, more than temporary removal of residents from the municipality. Well, I think I see a lot of tear in those, uh, those words there. Or in a case, an ordinary ward, councilman, trustee, and district, more than temporary removal of residents, blah, 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 blah. And it says, "The corporate authorities have the authority to determine whether a vacancy under this subsection has occurred." And I believe that's what was done, and I probably mistaken.
Well, I know in the past you have interpreted, uh, certain parts of the state statute and they've been wrong, so if, you know, not being a qualified attorney, I probably would go off of what you've got to read. I've read that same, I've read that same statute.
Gary, just a question, is that the, is that the statute that you're referring to?
Yes.
That you're going to give the copy of?
Yeah. Right here, if you want to come on.
I already have that basically in the back of my head, I've read that, so...
Okay, no, yeah, no, I didn't, yeah.
It's right out of your Illinois Municipal League book.
And as, as any of this pertains to tonight's meeting, there's no action being taken tonight on that. But I will share with you that I spoke to someone at the IML last week, and they told me that this board does have the authority through the statutes to replace someone that has abandoned their post. And they referred me back... And they referred me back to that same statute. Now, would they put that in writing and email that to me? Absolutely not. But that's what they, that is what he told me. I asked for that. I asked for an email. Would you email me something or write that down and mail it to my home? And he said, no.
Yep. I remember Jason Shetter not being here for over a year and nobody ever tried to replace him.
I questioned that many times. His absence.
Anyway.
But at any rate, no action's being taken on that tonight.
It's just words.
Again.
It's just words.
Yeah, Jason still lived in town and he was working out of town. When he wasn't coming to the... Ms. Comodina has moved out of town.
So, so it is, I guess my question is, is Gary replacing Comodina or you?
A vacancy is a vacancy.
Yeah. Vacancy is a vacancy.
Well, when, okay, a vacancy is a, okay, there's two you guys say. I just wanted to know which one he's replacing. Because with you taking the position of acting mayor, you still have the trustee spot. I don't know the better.
No, you do not.
There's an ability to refill that.
When I was appointed, when I was appointed mayor, my...
I asked the I M L about that, too. And then we have to do a official written resignation of trustee. They said, no. The I M L told me that when you accept the position of interim mayor going to, into an election, that it's just implied that you have resigned from your trustee seat because you can't hold two seats at the same time.
You can't, can't have both positions.
Exactly. You cannot.
Unlike a mayor pro town, it can.
Yes.
I believe an acting mayor can as well.
He can.
Okay, just, just wanted to get cleared up on which one you were filling. Doesn't matter.
Okay, let's get back to our...
Orbits.
Appropriations.
No, no, that's right. I do know it as well as I do.
Um, thirty days after its passage? But we should have this passed, yeah, March. Yeah, next month.
So in the month of March.
Yeah, I'd like to have it passed in March and we'll just ship it out.
Okay. So we can do this next month. You going back to work today? Wow.
Stevie, hold on now.
We've got, we've got all those numbers that I, I put out for you last month, so... And you've got an accurate financial report for what's been going on, anyway. Uh, so, yeah, you can just times that by two because things don't change much.
Yep.
So we can add that into the respective...
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I adjourn.
Motion made by Dan.
I second it.
I second what you said.